Okay. Okay, so my participation is the part excellence of education and the safety of my children. At in the Glenbar district, my children are in elementary district forty one as well as the district eighty seven. I live in Glendon Heights, so I'm very much concerned about pornographic books. They are not only really pornographic, they their text is very bad, very pornographic. I want the district to allocate significant amount of funds to review all the library books, any pornographic materials, which is not science and technology, it should be removed on very urgent basis. And I want the board to bring the justice to the people who has overlooked all the principles who are supposed to sign on any of the books which are going to be included against the the guidelines of the pornographic materials which are in the bylaws of the district. They should be, they should have been excluded, but they are ignored. So it is significant amount of negligence which has happened, it should be taken seriously. There is a wide campaign among the parents going on. Some parents can be violent, I'm not suggesting them they should, but this material is so violent that it is concerning to each and every parent of this district that it should be reviewed and removed and appropriate justice should be served to the people who are accountable for that. Thank you.
Can we, we're gonna get through public participation, so can we eliminate the clapping?
Maveen, that's me. Maveen is my first name. Fatima. Hi, everyone. Nice to see you. Good evening. My name is Maveen and I have two kids going to Glenbard West District eighty seven. I am here as asserted by the other parents with regards to the concern with these books. These books do not have place in the library. We have children under eighteen and we as parents would need to monitor as to what they can to to certain extent where the boundaries can be, you know, starting from. Within the boundaries, it's us who have to see as prime responsible people. So this was addressed before, I'd like to know what the board has been doing or what steps have been have been taken in order to get these books reviewed and removed from the library. That's number one concern and then we, parents, do not want to go just back and forth asking removal, removal. We need to know what steps have been taken. You know, was anything addressed, was this addressed with the school, with the department, with the chair, with the librarians? Or if we need to bring in more people to review the books that are already there in the shelves? So like one of the parents has just said allocate some funds to do that, hire more people so that, you know, we get to the root of this problem. And then we do not want to be just going back and forth like I said. So what steps have been taken is something that we want to hear by next meeting. All right, and yes, a lot of things have been discussed before, but I believe this has been going nationwide. It has been going on in Texas, Utah, Utah, and I believe in Texas, Governor Abbott has asked, he has directed the state agencies to look into the standards and gear up the standards of reviewing the books. This can go high, but here we are stressed stressed out about our community. We are bringing forward the concerns of the community, this is directly affecting us. We could take it to the next level, but that would involve more time, more involvement. I know ideas are divided, people may or may not agree to each its own. But it's our children that we are concerned about, my children may pass Glenbard and go forward. But there are some certain other children who are facing the problems. You know, they are not being watched by their parents because their parents are doing jobs, they cannot monitor the children what they are doing. So under eighteen, this is not something that should be there in the libraries. We could give out contraceptives tomorrow, how do you, how do you like that? Would the board agree to that? Would the parents agree to that? Would the teachers agree to that? This is not what we are sending the students to the school for. You know, this is not, this is not required. If they want, they can go to the libraries, go elsewhere, but not the school. So it's my humble request, it's concerning a lot of parents, like I tell my children, I did not put food on the table to my children today because I had to come here. We had to bring forward the, you know, the biggest concern and the dangers lurking out there. We are protecting children from whatnot, but this is like, you know, pushed in. You, your child cannot unsee what they have already seen. They cannot unread what they have already read. So please save us and save our children. That is all I want to say, and next time when we are here, please have, please have a response on this topic. That's all I can ask for now. Thank you so much.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Monica Moro. I am a parent of a senior at Glenbard East. I just like to ask if we can unite in a mission that I believe we have in common and that is raising our children right, educating them right, and introducing the right concepts at the right time. We have all minor children in high schools, there are really few who are over the age of eighteen and they've been exposed to, I would say, material that is prohibited by the rules, by the policies, and even by state laws. So right now we are in violence or in violation of a state law and we shouldn't take it lightly. I know that rules are important, I know that procedures and due process are important. This is to help us maintain structure and some order, but we also have to be flexible. Please don't make parents work hard for mistakes, to correct mistakes that were made by paid professionals and they are paid by the community from our taxes. We appreciate the board being, you know, here on their free time, we appreciate your volunteering, but also you were entrusted to represent the community and we like to see results. We can talk here for years and decades about what is right and what is wrong. We know what is right and what is wrong and we have to lead our kids in the right direction. We have to distinguish between respecting all and between enabling and promoting behavior that is not considered healthy. And this is exactly what pornography is about. I think that we all agree on that. And please don't make parents jump through hoops of policies. We need to act because policies are taking time and it's time wasted because more and more kids have access to this. If somebody makes a mistake, I think that it takes some guts to admit, well, we made a mistake. What we can do to correct it and what we can do in the future to avoid making the same mistakes. We learn through mistakes, that's all right, we are humans, okay, let's admit it. The kids have to know that we adults are making mistakes too. This is what makes us being respected. Okay, so I'd like to see action. Words are words, like to see actions, whoever made it mistake, please, hands in the air, say, okay, what we, the paid staff can do now to undo it, to remove the books and to make sure that it will not happen ever again. Let's unite in this. Thank you.
This mic is like
If you're close to it, we can hear you.
So hi, my name is Kesar Chishti. I am here representing my daughter. They go to this Glenbar Community School, Glenbar West particularly. And I'm really concerned when I knew about, when I get to know about this issue that in the school library, there are some books which are not appropriate for the eighteen, like the minor kids. So that's where we came and raised our concern. So first question is like what, and you can answer later, like what, what did you guys do since last time to investigate this issue? And then maybe we need to find out, is there any, anything missing in the process? Maybe we need to revise the process of reviewing the books or is, do we need more resources, appropriate resources? Or do you think that this is based on the procedure or the rules? This is, this kind of content should be in the school, then we need to know that, then we need to discuss that and fix it. So because from my understanding and our community understanding, these kind of books should not be age appropriate for these kids and they need to be removed. And when we were discussing this in our home and now we are, all the communities getting awareness, the other danger is that these, the kids are, if they find out, they will now be entrusted to go and see the books. What's in that book that my parents and my community like fighting for or trying to get removed? So this is getting unneeded attention for the kids also. So we need to get this issue resolved as soon as possible. At the same time, we need to review the process, we need to review the criteria and then what happened here? We need to fix that so that it doesn't happen again in the future. So because many people, when they see this kind of thing, they will, and if there's no resolution, they will also take their kids to private schools and they, they get out of this public school committee, which should not be the case because there's a lot of benefits staying within the community and interacting with other people and groups. And we do respect other people's ideas and ideology that whatever you believe in, it's fine, everybody has a right to do that. So and getting to know each other and knowing the values of each other and to respect each other is fine also. But then giving access to something which is not even appropriate throughout the world, like it's under, plus this content, what was shown to us, it's plus eighteen content, it's adult content and even pornographic in a way. So even if when plus eighteen people are going to these kind of websites, they say that, are you eighteen plus? There, there are certain warning, there are certain procedures here, the kids have access to this without any like stoppage. So that's very concerned, concerned for us, so please do look into this and have some resolution as soon as possible. Thank you.
Can you hear me? I watched the last Board of Education meeting online. Glenbard parents respectfully brought up their concerns about inappropriate and pornographic books in the Glenbard libraries. I agree that the books, lamer, gender queer, all boys aren't blue, and this book is gay, do not belong in our school libraries and they violate, violate many District eighty seven policies. I wonder who approved these books? I wonder, is this part of the diversity, inclusion, and equity goals of Glenbard? Another concern I have is that although many parents voiced concerns about these books at the last meeting, none of the parent comments are in the minutes from that meeting. I also wonder why Glenbard is not being transparent and is not sharing parent concerns with the Glenbard community.
What do you mean?
I have the microphone.
Thank you. My name, Allah most merciful invention. So it's very unfortunate, I was, I missed last meeting, but online, you know, I happened to see this meeting. It was really shocking seeing this, I mean, hostile and inappropriate, you know, books they are being available in the kids' library. It's very unfortunate. We never had this trouble with our elder kids, our two sons, they went to Glenbard East, graduated from here. Now, even now they have done their graduation, their workforce, so Mashallah, they are doing great. So no, I have the youngest kid now, he's in Glenbard South. So to him, to him available these things, this such stuff in the library. I mean, libraries, you know, they are the, I mean, paradise for the readers. And if such stuff is there, so it's really ironic, this is really, I mean, very scary. The place where my, my youth still, I'm now sixty, still, it's always my wish, wherever, this city I go, I go to their library in that city and go and, you know, read myself as well, so many books. So just, just want to share, I hope there's no young kid here. So yesterday by chance, I was just, there's a video going on, they were talking, they were a young group. So they are talking different topics, you know, of our interest of this age. When social media is bombarding, you know, I mean, nothing is in control. So they are talking about one of the serial killer in America. So if I'm wrong, please correct me, who killed like fifty five girl ladies, unfortunately. And, and he had a definite death sentence. And before, like couple of minutes before dying, he, he said, I want to share something with you guys who are there in the court. So he said, let me tell, let me tell you, I'm from a very conservative Christian family. And we really, we had our parents, he said, my parents are very careful watching what we are doing, everything. But unfortunately, he said, I become addicted to pornography. And that finally made me do this such a heinous crime. So I hope nobody here sitting here, we all are parents here and no one, no one like, God forbid, we can get into, you know, finally end up like this. So this is, you know, these elementary school, middle schools, you know, they are the, they build up, you know, the personalities, then they go with their lives. Then these readers, they become the leaders of the tomorrow. So it is a real humble request, kindly, please. I mean, it's, this, this place should not be only just a discussion and we are, I mean, there should be some practical action must be taken as early as possible. I like to quote here, like, and death or no time, ladies have dangerous hands. And another this Hamlet line, I like, I love to quote, and I end up, I'm going to end up with this line, that is last, last sentence. Madness in great ones must not unwashable. If parents are getting mad, it means there is something very serious. I mean, we love our school, we love Glenbard East District, it's a wonderful place for the, for the parents, for the student. It's always for me, the best place to go, always come to this school, attend the different functions, the pride functions, honors, technicians. Please, for God's sake, get all of this stuff. I really appreciate giving it back. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Can you hear me?
She's not talking yet, but closer you get to the mic, the better you can hear. There you go.
So thank you for being here. I came to almost every board meeting in two thousand nineteen. So I recognize some of you. Thank you, John, for your help with the religious exemption for the locker rooms, that was really great and the board meetings were always a little bit frustrating because I felt like I was listened to, but maybe not heard. And so I wanted to come back and share some thoughts. I'm a resident of this district. I have two teenage children that are no longer in public school, but I pay three thousand dollars in taxes, so I guess that gives me a right to speak. My daughter did go to Glenbard South her freshman year during two thousand twenty when it was online, but we decided to leave public school after that for a variety of reasons. The children of these schools are entrusted to you, the adults in this, that are overseeing the schools. The parents of these schools, the parents in these schools are trusting you, the board, the superintendent, the librarian, the principal, to protect our kids from pornography. I Googled the effects of pornography on teens and here's what the research says about the impact of consistent porn used by teens. When teens view pornography, they develop unrealistic sexual beliefs and values and over-focus and obsession on sex, sexually aggressive and permissive behaviors, early interest in sex, which leads to online pregnancy, behavior problems in school, depression, alcohol, drug abuse, bonding issues with others, including parents. Pornography and sexual fantasies stunts brain growth. Exposure to porn can cause trauma and PTSD. And the more explicit the exposure, the more and more they need, so it becomes very addictive, making healthy relationships impossible. These were, books were a recent topic at, at the District two hundred board meeting and one of the board members said he thought these books would prevent suicides. But I can tell you that pornography never has or never will save somebody's life. It will mess it up big time, it'll put people in bondage. There's nothing redeeming about pornography for anyone, heterosexual or homosexual, let alone minors like our precious children. No lives are going to be saved by watching porn or reading porn. They're adults in this room, they would agree with me. Please follow your own rules and guidelines and remove these books from the library. The kids don't need them.
Hi, my name is Jamil Said. I have two boys, one graduated, graduated from Glenbar West a few years ago and second one is a senior. So I don't know if you guys are going to be answering questions, but the discuss. I mean, I, I feel like using profanity, but I don't know how you guys feel about that. I'm guessing you guys won't allow it. Exactly. There's one point. Second thing is, I would like to ask is, what would happen if kids checked out these books and discussed it in class or in the school? Would they be punished for it? Would there be action taken against them? Because they didn't bring the book from outside, it was checked out from the library. So I, I mean, I, I really don't know what else to say. I mean, it's, you guys are adults. I, I'm guessing there will be some sort of a consultation, some discussions, and then there'll be decision made. I mean, when you know when something's wrong, you try to stop it immediately, you don't go into discussion. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Are having a hard time comparing you. The mic working properly?
Yes, they don't.
They gotta get closer to it.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Go ahead, you can see if they can hear you.
My name is Vasi Khan. I'm resident of Glen Allen. One of my kids graduated last year from Glenbar West. My next, they'll be graduating this year. This doesn't mean that I should be careless with the other kids of my community and my neighbor going, attending these Glenbar School and coming to the school, they're, they're coming to school for studying, studying what's supposed to be taught. And you all know why all these parents are here, what's concerned is, so I'm not going to just repeat the same thing. Why not we all work together, parents and the board, to nip in the bud of this issue and just done with it? You know, you guys don't want to hear us every week, I'm sure. I mean, you guys have some, some other better things to do and we all do as well. So let's just make a committee of the parents and the, and the board or whoever you want and we can work together and just done with it. Thank you.
Not agenda, oh, not, not agenda related? Oh, okay. There you go.
Go ahead, yeah.
Yeah.
Hi, everybody. I didn't expect to speak now because I don't see where this is on the agenda, but it does relate to what other people are saying. I'm here tonight to represent an alternative view to the comments about removing books from our libraries in the Glenbard High Schools. First of all, if you don't want your children to read certain books, don't have them check them out. Secondly,
Listen to everybody, so it would be kind.
I think.
Let's just, let's just listen. Secondly, there is a diverse group of students that attend the Glenbard High Schools as we talked about earlier tonight with the principal from East. And that diversity should be reflected in the books in the library. One of the most powerful affirming experiences for students is to read and see themselves represented in literature. As an English language arts teacher, I see this so, so I see this every day, how important it is to have black writers, gay writers, women writers, Muslim writers. I'm talking about reading books that represent all faiths and characters that have no faith practice, characters of all races, genders, sexualities, heritages, economic backgrounds. Public school education is for all, not just some. And the library should be a reflection of that as well as a source for ideas and not a place for censorship. Throughout history, groups that have been deemed minorities have been censored. And we need to stand up against those practices regardless of who the minority is today. We are trying to teach students to think for themselves. Restricting ideas and discouraging freedom of thought undermines that primary function of education. We should be banning hate, not books. As a Christian minister once asked at a previous District eighty seven board meeting, what would fear do and what would love do? Thank you.
We're on this one now.
Good evening. Read widely, listen openly, speak peace. I agree. Where have we seen this? I volunteer as an after-school tutor at Glencrest and see a very diverse group of kids in the program. Our school library should provide materials which speak to all students, materials to which students can connect, materials presenting information and characters which resonate with students and speak to their experiences. In our Glenbar district, we strive to teach students to think for themselves and to be lifelong learners. If we restrict or limit ideas and discourage freedom of thought, we will undermine this primary function of education. As school board member Reverend Shannon mentioned earlier, it was crucial for his son to see people like him represented on the faculty and by deduction in the books and curriculum offered in our schools. And as a previous speaker mentioned, our board should represent the community. We all need to feel valued, we all need to be seen and heard, especially the most vulnerable members of our society. Our students are on their way to becoming members of the wider community and our schools should prepare and enable them to enter into society with an open mind, an inclusive perspective, and a nonjudgmental point of view. Books are a great resource.
Books are a great resource to achieve this goal. Read widely, listen openly, speak peace. This great mantra graces the doorway of this library. I hope you continue to follow it.
Thank you.
Which one am I using?
This guy?
Yep.
Okay.
That one looks good.
Kristen Seaman. I have three teenage girls at Glenbard South. Um, last board meeting, I wasn't able to come in person, but I will tell you, I always have you guys in my ear, whether it's at a soccer game, or it was over at the volleyball board tonight, I was able to tune in and um, I tuned in about the time that I was listening to Cetera. Read from one of these books that just gives me great concern. Um, I don't know that there is a place in terms of diversity with our student group that involves pornography. Um, I do agree that we need to create a respectful, learning, safe environment that represents all of our community, all of our students and all the diversity. I don't think there is a place for pornography with that. Um, and and I do have concerns in regards to decision, decision to keep these books in place. Um, it's clearly a violation of at least a habit of policies or policies. I think if that's going to be the case, there's going to need to be some serious revisions of the board policies. Um, because it's clearly specified that um this type of material is a violation. Um, the other concern that I do have is in regards to how this gets addressed. My understanding is in order to have a reconsideration of any of the books that are in these libraries, that I have to or any community member would have to read every one of these books. You would have to fill out a form specifying exactly what you feel is offensive. Pictures, so you will have to subject yourselves to reading these books in their entirety um in order to be able to even have a conversation with the principal or librarian about or the board, um whoever that might be, in order to have those books removed. I personally don't want to put that stuff in my head. I don't want my girls to have this in their heads, and I don't want to have to put it in my own head. Um, so I think that needs to be reconsidered as well in regards to what it is, is the procedures are for removing the books. The other concern I have is how in the world did these books get approved in the first place? My understanding is these books have to be read, I would assume in their entirety, by the librarian and need to be approved by each principal. Did that in fact happen? Did each one of these books, and there were a number of them that were listed off at the last meeting, did each of those books actually have a fair vetting process that went through? If I have to read that and put myself through that, I would want to know that these individuals that are responsible for that decision did the same thing.
Thank you. Yeah.
My name is Derek Crenshaw, father of three students that uh went through Glenbard, and we have one more that's homeschool right now. We moved to Wheaton for better education for our kids in a better environment. And these books don't provide that for anyone. I'm kind of triggered by someone mentioning the fact that we need more diversity, like blacks, Muslims, and different authors. That's fine. This is pornography. I don't want to see heterosexual pornography, homosexual pornography. It doesn't help with reading and writing and academics. The public library has an adult section where these kids, if their parents want to check check that stuff out. Our iPads, if you if you put any of this stuff on your iPads, it will trigger those iPads. Okay, so we need to get back to reading, writing, and math. That's education. We have a lot of diversity. The kids are protected in the schools. I'll tell you that. We do protect the kids. We are open to all kids. Uh, we have all the duck clubs for kids, but these books and pornography and these books, a lot of teachers, a lot of people say, why do we even have these books? I don't want to see boys kissing in the hallway. We don't want to see girls kissing in the hallway. We don't want to see any of that type of stuff going on. We just want to get back to the basics. And these books do not provide basic education for the kids. Okay, so I don't understand why we have these books in the library. We need to get back to the basics, get back to reading, writing, and math, bring our grades up. Our proficiency rate isn't where it used to be. We need to get back to that. Okay, and don't include pornography and race. You know, it has nothing to do with being black, Muslim, or Hispanic, or Asian. These are pornographic books, and they don't need to be in a high school for the children. They're eighteen and under. They're not adults yet. We need to protect them until they get out of the high schools. The public high school, public libraries, they can go there and get that stuff if their parents want that for them. And you can't say, well, I don't want my kids to check that stuff out. Kids are kids. They're going to find this material, and they're going to get into it because they're not supervised all the time when they're at the at the schools. Thank you.
Uh, good evening. Lita Sumura, head spear in the Glenbard District Eighty Seven and a parent, a graduate, and I'm also a graduate of Glenbuddy's. Um, I put the board back up here too because I know some of the board members were not here at the meeting as uh last time, and I also wanted to say that there is a picture in the Gender Queer book that is not diversity showing a blowjob happening. Okay? What the image is here, the graphic sexual language that is in these books, that's not diversity. Okay, it's pornography. It's not, it does not belong in our schools. But I I asked the policy committee uh this evening to put on the agenda to take action on the violations of the policies in regards to the obscene books. Gender Queer, All Boys Aren't Blue, Blamer, and This Book Is Gay. Um, Dr. Larson had mentioned that in Policy Six Two Three O, which is the request for reconsideration of library resource materials. But we should not have to fill out a form to reconsider these obscene books because anyone who has eyes and ears knows they are inappropriate for our children. We should not have to plead with this board or principals or librarians to remove these books and others like them. Look at these images. Look at the sexual descriptions in these books. Not appropriate. Okay, so please stand up. Stand up to this evil that you are approving to be in our high school libraries. Thank you.
I'm Cedra Crenshaw. Only someone who is grooming a child for sex would put pornographic, sexually graphic, obscene, vulgar material in the hands of a minor child. That's not diversity. That's child abuse. And let's also think about all of the special needs students uh in the schools who are in no way prepared socially and emotionally to deal with this type of material. I think someone mentioned, you know, what if someone, what if a kid checks out one of these books and, you know, they pass it to a friend? You know, kids are prone to do things like that. Okay, so you have to think about all the kids, including our special needs kids. You know, I filled out one of those forms, Request for Reconsideration, six point two thirty. I sent it to all the principals and the librarians. Miss uh Principal Santie got back to me, but she told me I'd have to read this material in full in order for my complaint to be considered. Now, I'm going to read to you what I what I wrote to her. I'm not going to do that. That goes against my religion, and I have a First Amendment right to practice my religion, which includes not consuming obscene or pornographic material. I'm going to tell you the same thing I told the policy committee, and no one here can force me to do that. Uh, she cited the language at the top of that form. That language needs to be removed. No one should should have to read all of that material uh if it goes against their conscience or their religion. However, Miss Santie, she did not have a problem with a building principal or librarian uh breaking the law, the Children's Internet Protection Act, which you cite in your materials, as well as at least for board policy seven three ten eight twenty five nine ten nine ten eighty three, which prevented the librarians and the principals from purchasing this obscene material in the first place. Those purchases on the face were illegal. And I asked her some questions. Has she, the librarians, have they read this material in its entirety? Have you on the board, have you read this material? If so, why did they purchase these books? If not, when do they plan to do so? Uh, does the district filter this type of material on the iPads under SIPA, the Children's Internet Protection Act? Could you post these photographs on the website or the excerpts? Could you post it in on the walls in this school? And again, what is your written justification for permitting this material to be purchased, distributed, and accessed by students in this district, knowing it violates policy and the law? And and I think many parents here tonight and concerned people, they've called for action. We're, we don't want to do this back and forth. We want action on this. I think that's that's reasonable. Are we going to get some action on this? I think the the community deserves that. Thank you.
All right. We have gone through all the public participation, so if anyone still is wanting to say something, this is it. Otherwise, we're closing public participation.